Every government which acts with equity towards its subjects and every dominion under whose flag the poor and the weak find protection. We ask thee by thy holiness and bounty to pour out thy blessing upon this government, which has stretched its tent over citizens from every land, that its inhabitants, its industries, its territories may be penetrated by justice. O God, strengthen its executive. Give authority and influence to its word and utterance. Protect its territories and dominions. Guard its reputation. Make its ideals to echo throughout the world. Reveal its traces and exalt its principles by thy conquering power and wonderful might throughout the kingdoms of creation. Thou art the confirmer of whomsoever thou willst. Verily, thou art the powerful and the mighty. Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you for joining us. Before we get started, I just want to announce that the executive session will convene after the regular session adjourns. And we're up to a roll call, please.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mayor LaChe.
Here.
Councilmember Magazine.
Here.
Councilmember DePorter.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Yates.
Present.
Okay. First is a proclamation for our Pony Express Day Fountain Hills. Whereas between 1860 and 1861, the Pony Express mail service was offered between Missouri and California, which became an iconic part of U.S. Western history. And whereas in 1959, the Pony Express was remembered in Arizona by the members of the Hashknife Posse who carried mail on horseback over 200 miles from Holbrook to Scottsdale, a ride which has since become an annual commemorative event. And whereas Fountain Hills is the next-to-last stop on their trek. Now therefore, January 28, 2016, is hereby proclaimed to be Hashknife Pony Express Day in the town of Fountain Hills. All town residents, visitors, and residents and visitors of the Lower Verde River Valley are invited to join in the festivities and dress western to commemorate this part of our history in the West. Thanks. Okay. And our next proclamation is for National Mentoring Month. Whereas across our nation, mentors steer our youth through challenging times and support their journey into adulthood. And whereas during National Mentoring Month, we honor these important individuals who unlock the potential and nurture the talent of our country. And whereas the dedication of mentors has helped countless young men and women succeed when they might have otherwise fallen short of their full potential. And whereas coaches, community leaders, tutors, and trusted friends are working to mentor today's youth to develop tomorrow's leaders. And whereas the contributions of these engaged adults extend beyond the lives they touch and have a lasting impact that strengthens our country and our future. And whereas 92 adults are involved in the mentoring program in Fountain Hills. And whereas 105 children in the Fountain Hills Schools are being mentored. Now therefore, I, Linda M. Cavanaugh, mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, do hereby proclaim January 2016 as National Mentoring Month in the town of Fountain Hills. And on behalf of the town council, hereby thank all of the mentors who have contributed to the lives of young people in our town. Okay. And we have mentors with us. Roger, do you want to come up with your group for a picture? And I'll present you with the proclamation. Bring the rest of your group up.
I'd like to be in the background.
Since when?
Yes, since when?
Over here.
Okay. All right. How's that?
Would you like to say?
With me is the members of the Mentor Council, Sandy Davis and Joanne Mehan. And we have, this council kind of directs and coordinates the program, so.
Under the umbrella of Golden Eagle.
Yeah, we're part of the Golden Eagle Foundation. And so we're here representing all of those mentors.
Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us. And we'll see you at the mentoring breakfast. Next up is, let's talk about economic development. Actually, just have one item. The GPEC Board of Directors meeting was just this morning. They've come out with a long-term strategic plan looking ahead to 2019. The objective is to strengthen GPEC's competitiveness in business attraction and to drive quality job creation. They have also done a market intelligence study to help direct the future trajectory of the region to make us more competitive with other states. GPEC did involve all of its members in this study. I was able to contribute the needs of Fountain Hills as a small member community. And I will also be meeting with the director, Chris Camacho, in February. My goal is to make sure that Fountain Hills is a strong and viable part of GPEC. And that is my report. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
No, we don't. So go on to the consent agenda. We have two items. Can I get a motion to accept as written?
Second.
And we need a roll call for that.
Councilmember DePorter.
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine.
Aye.
Vice Mayor LaChe.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Yates.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Mayor 7-0.
For regular agenda items, consideration of Resolution 2016-01 establishing the Sister Cities Advisory Commission and adopting bylaws for its governments. This item was tabled from the January 7, 2016 council meeting. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the item before you is a request to establish a Sister Cities Advisory Commission. This was a request that was on the prior council meeting. There had been some discussion with the council on the benefits of such an advisory commission back in, I believe it was September, it was October. And essentially what is before you is a seven-member body that would report to the mayor and council advising the council on sister city-related activities. It is not a replacement of the Sister Cities Corporation, but instead would augment and actually help that organization. And it would be very complimentary. As, prior to the last council meeting, there were some concerns on some of the board members of the Fountain Hills Sister Cities Corporation. And some of them, the concerns really had to do with not really understanding what was before you. I had an opportunity to attend the board meeting. I was invited by the President Jackie Miles and had a good opportunity to go through and discuss all the various different elements of this advisory commission. After going through that, there was a affirmative vote. It was, not really quite sure if it was unanimous or if it was one that dissented, but I believe once the explanation, once I explained something after the vote, they went back and the person withdrew her nay and made it an a. So this was, this is recommended approval by the Fountain Hills Sister Cities Corporation. They're, based on some of the input that we had from the president and the board, we have made some modifications from what was before you at the last council meeting. Previously, we had recommended that two board members from the Sister Cities Corporation would serve on it. After discussion, it was recommended that we added another position. So it would be three of the seven on the Sister Cities Advisory Commission would be from the corporation. There were some minor modifications to the resolution before you, but they really had to do with a change in the mission so that the Sister Cities International Mission was reflected in the resolution. And also, we added or changed the meeting frequency, which was monthly, to at least quarterly. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I do see that we have members from the Board of Directors, including Jackie Miles, who's the president. So if the council wishes to ask any questions of the Sister Cities Corporation, that would be, I think, appropriate at this time.
Any questions? All right. Councilmember Hanson.
I just had one thing, and Grady, you can probably address this.
Kathy, microphone.
Shaw. When I saw this come up, I did wonder about adding a commission because we went through that whole exercise of consolidation.
Correct.
So I just wondered if you felt really strongly that this was certainly justified in adding what we had been reducing.
And I feel really horrible because I know there has been a history. And here I am presenting a recommendation to add one more commission. I will take the ownership of this one, not only for the idea and pushing it forward, but also to act as the liaison. But back to your question, Sister Cities are relationships between cities. And we have been very fortunate to have an outstanding Sister Cities organization that has helped us with that. But really, when you enter into a Sister City relationship, it's for the long run. And I'm looking at, you know, 100 years, 200 years, and it's hard for us to imagine that.
You expect to be around a long time then.
I sure hope so. But, but in all seriousness, these relationships are like treaties. And the treaties, as you know, in this country go back many hundred years in many cases. And so the point is, is it's really a responsibility of the town to take this seriously. Now, there are a variety of different cities around the country that have nonprofits much like ours here that do that. But this provides some sustainability in the long run for the organization because we basically are the ones that have signed the partnership agreement, our mayor and the mayors of each of our sister cities. And so this is really putting the responsibility for us to maintain this forever. So I hope I answered your question.
Yes, I appreciate that. And as long as the board unanimously was supportive of this.
Right.
And feel that they'll have their autonomy as well, and it'll be a coordinated effort, then.
In fact, I think it's going to be, there's some excitement here because I think that there's some, some benefits to the organization as well that I didn't really go into. But as an example, you probably recall seeing the Sister Cities having a booth at the Oktoberfest. Well, currently, I was asked if we could provide the, you know, if that could be under our liability insurance. And I said absolutely not. But after this situation, it could because it would be co-sponsored between our Sister Cities Advisory Commission and their organization. So there's a benefit immediately with this. Also, it also provides additional people that can volunteer to help with fundraising activities and also hosting delegations when they come here. The other thing is, it will help having this close to the, to the council because at some point in the future, you may have a situation where this is not as much of a priority over time with, with maybe, you know, elected officials. We've been very fortunate because that has not been the case. But by, by making this a structural organizational part of the, of the town, that's kind of submitting this so that can't go away.
Okay. Good examples. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Jackie, since you've come out tonight, is there anything that you wanted to share with You are the new president of the Sister Cities.
Mayor Kavanaugh and councilmembers. Now, we, we are in total support of this commission and working with them together so that we have a better and stronger Sister Cities organization.
Great. Okay. Anything else from the council?
Yes, Mayor, I had a comment, or actually a clarification to the town manager. What process will be in place for filling commission positions? I understand by default, three of the directors will come on, and it's a board of seven. So what process will be put in place?
So there had been a request originally by Jackie on behalf of her board to put some language in the resolution that, that the organization would appoint people and let us know who would be serving. But I told her, this is a town advisory board. And so really, what would be best is for them to send a letter just saying, these are who we would recommend. And we'd still follow our current procedure where the mayor recommends. And the mayor, I know, would take that into consideration in doing her appointments. Because the resolution does state that it has to be three current board members, we would rely on them to let us know who is current and who would be the best. But we didn't want to make that change to the resolution. So we'll be coordinating that. I hope I answered your question there.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Anything else? If not, looking for a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2016-01 establishing a Sister Cities Advisory Commission and bylaws for its governance.
All right. Any other council discussion? Fall in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor 7-0.
All right. Congratulations. All right. Our next item is discussion with possible direction to staff related to the legislative bulletin. And everybody received the update from the League. They want, they wanted us to look at two in particular. So we'll start with HB 2026, which is the residential rental. This was brought up last session by Representative Mitchell. And it was to exempt landlords from paying rental tax. Last session, he wanted it on all rental property. And this time, he is asking for just state tax. So is it state tax and, well, he's asking for 100, all right, let me give my notes if I don't get this wrong. It's by population?
Those over 100,000.
Those over 100,000. Thank you. So it's those over 100,000. So the League is asking us to oppose that. And they feel that, first of all, we're going to be losing $158,000.
That's correct. It's, I believe the finance director says approximately 158,000.
Okay. And of course, lots of other cities would be losing more. And I think that right now, this only is going to affect eight cities. But we would expect that if he passes this, then next session, he'll probably expand it to include us. So the League is asking us to join them in opposing this. Any questions on that one? Yes?
No questions. But obviously, I'm definitely against that. But as we've done in the past, we just kind of make a generic discussion and just kind of give direction. We don't formally vote on this, correct?
We just give direction.
So as I can see, it appears that there is a consensus for staff to send an official opposition from the town of Fountain Hills in this matter.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And also, you know, we could also, you can also register with the legislature if you wanted to go down and speak on it or, you know, do something more than just as a group. There's options for individuals. Okay. And the other one is the TPT has reared its ugly head once again, HB 2267, introduced by Representative Cobb. And according to the League, this is just going to complicate this more. They don't see that this is going to solve any of the problems. So they're asking us to join them in opposing this one also. Okay? You seem to be.
I would agree with that. I had, Mayor, I had the opportunity to read through the bill, and I would agree 100%. I thought I was confused before, and then after the reading of the bill, my goodness.
Yeah, it's, it's just making it more confusing. And according to the League, it seems to be solving one person's problem, but creating problems for everybody else. So not quite the answer. And I guess someone on the council wanted to talk about HB 2115, the public employee's misappropriation penalty. I don't know which council person asked for that.
This is, this is one that actually came up in the, in the conference call. And this has been, in some semblance, has been in past years, this bill. And so what they're talking about, now this says misappropriations, but when you start reading the bill, it covers a lot of other egregious, you know, perceptions of egregious actions on the part of public officials or employees, including penalties of losing potentially their pensions. And so this is one of those situations where the, the League and all the cities and towns clearly oppose us because we feel like this is a reach into our sovereignty as municipalities.
There's, there's also an issue with this is that we're a community property state. And according to the IRS, you can't, you wouldn't be able to deny benefits.
To the spouses.
To the spouse. So this is why this would probably not even get anywhere. But this just has one person putting this forward, so it probably won't go anywhere. Okay? And another one was HB 2024, sovereign authority. Who want, anybody wanted to talk about that one?
Mayor, if I may, yes, I brought that up at our last council meeting and was just asking for some clarification on the bill itself. So I was wondering if either our town manager or town attorney could kind of weigh in on it, please.
Ma'am, Mayor, I'll take a stab at what I think might be the, the point of a bill. It essentially says that a municipal employee or anybody else can't comply with an executive order, a decision of the Supreme Court of the United States, or, sorry, third category, or an agency order. So essentially, the, you know, the Reed case that just was brought down by the U.S. Supreme Court, we couldn't comply with that unless the holding of the Reed case were adopted as law by Congress. We couldn't comply with ADQ or the federal government's versions of environmental quality unless Congress approved those as law. It's essentially saying separation of powers really doesn't matter. Congress is the supreme law of the land, and nothing can happen without them. The bill is, is so patently unconstitutional, it doesn't even really merit any kind of real discussion, but it's out there again. I mean, this discussion continues to circle around, and it has a, I don't know, judge, jury, and executioner approach to it that Congress has the final word on everything. And our system of laws was created so that there are checks and balances. And if the Supreme Court interprets the laws of Congress in a certain way, we're going to follow them. We're not going to ignore the law of the land. So I, I really hope there's not a lot of energy and time spent on this bill. But you just never know with these things.
All right. Well, we'll just, we'll mention that to the League and let them keep it on their radar.
Mayor, has the League weighed in on this bill?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
No, they haven't. I think that they're just waiting to see if it actually goes anywhere. They, I think they said, as of Tuesday, there was, there were already 650 bills dropped, and they expected a lot more. So they're just dealing with the ones that are really going to be hurting the municipalities. There was one other that I brought up to the League. It's not a bill. It hasn't been dropped yet. But I'm glad Jerry Miles is gone. The fine art industry is asking for tax exemption for art that's purchased here but shipped somewhere else. And I have quite a few reasons why I, well, they, they tried this last year, but now they're trying just on state, state tax. And as you know, state tax is also part of our state shared revenue. So as the state loses the tax, we also lose the tax. And we're probably going to be losing as it is because of the new census. One of my arguments was that I don't like carving out one particular group for a special exemption. There are lots of other, maybe more worthy groups. I hate to say that. Art is a luxury, not necessarily a necessity. And I also don't like the idea of someone who lives here in town, who purchases a piece of art, has to pay a tax. Yes, that person is supporting our community all the time by living here. And someone who just comes in for the day to go to an art show, purchases something and sends it home to wherever they live, and they don't have to pay a tax. So I, that's, that's another, another issue. I, you know, I have quite a few others. But I, and I guess another big point is, this was also brought up to Senator Kavanaugh, and one of the first things he asked them was, well, what exactly is the definition of fine art? And I, I did look that up, and it, it could just about be anything. I mean, the way this definition goes, my grandson's macaroni necklace would be a fine art because he says it is. So it could actually be expanded to almost anything. So I think that, that, that would be, if this does come up, I think we should watch it. And I asked the League to get out in front and keep an eye for that coming up. Councilwoman Magazine.
I'll let others decide whether or not my photography is fine art. I do lose, I ship a lot around the country, and I do lose business when people see they have to pay tax, plus they have to pay shipping and so on. But I think the mayor's exactly right on this one. I just don't see how you carve out something like that. It doesn't make any sense.
Any other comments on that? If that's something that's not been out there, they're just fishing, looking for someone to drop a bill for them. So far, they haven't, so we'll keep an eye on it. Is that good? Any?
Yes.
I didn't get any other things, so we'll just leave it at that. Grady?
Mayor, if I may, the League of Cities and Towns has an outstanding conference call each Monday morning. And I know the vice mayor recently registered for that. Any of you, if you wish to do it, even periodically if you're, you're available, you can listen in and you get to hear the intergavs and the League Directory talk through these issues. And I think it's very interesting and very helpful. So if you'd like, between Bev and I, we'll send out the information so that you can get registered. You have to register for it, but we'll go ahead and, and send that information out. So you're welcome to do that as well. And it would help you because you can also ask questions on the phone. So it's very helpful.
Okay. Anything else on this? Okay. If not, any other direction for Grady?
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Yates.
Councilmember Hanson and I had the pleasure of interviewing some folks for the Board of Adjustment seats. And it was brought up and discussed as some neat ideas about possibly taping more of the meetings for two reasons. One, we have the ability, as well as to make a permanent record, that if something is a little controversial, it has a more permanent record. Right now, we're taping the audio, kind of comparing it to the minutes, but it's not transcribed. And then after the minutes are approved, we get rid of the tape. Having spoken with our IT Mike, he had some great ideas, whether it be an intern, which would create a neat opportunity for someone on some of the other meetings, but planning and zoning board adjustments, some of these meetings. Or volunteer, you know, we have a tremendous volunteer program. But I thought at multiple levels, this might
know, we have a tremendous volunteer program, but I thought at multiple levels, this might be well-received, but wanted to throw that out there about the what-ifs. It wouldn't take a ton of space because we don't use tape anymore, it's all digitized, but it would create an opportunity, and of course, if we're always looking for something to put on Channel 11, if you can't sleep at night, by golly, the P&amp;Z meetings are something good to, to watch. But I just wanted to throw that out.
If the consensus is of the council, I can actually go research a little bit more and come back with a, a plan, okay?
I didn't want to, thank you. I didn't want to put the burden on Mike or anybody, but I think there might be, especially with how we're already set up, we already have the ability, we've got a great volunteer program, but it creates an opportunity for some AV folks in high school or some other things like that, that we could get it done minimal, so.
And, and most cities and towns, just to let you know, the, the planning and zoning is, is one of those.
Yes.
If they're going to, if they're going to broadcast, definitely council meetings and P&amp;Z are, are the other ones that are definitely broadcast, so, thank you. Thank you.
So are you saying when people can't sleep, they put us on?
No, not at least.
That's what it sounded like.
Although I've been approached at CBS saying, "You were in my bedroom last night at 11:00."
That would keep most people up.
All right, and last is, any activities or anything that I want to talk about? I have two short items. If anybody has anything, then I will go on. Just wanted to mention that I attended the opening day at the State Legislature with Senator Cavanaugh and Sheriff Joe Ohio. I was also able to talk briefly with Governor Ducey. The governor always has very nice things to say about Fountain Hills, and I'm hoping that maybe someday, we can get him out here to come and visit us. The town manager, Grady Miller, Senator Cavanaugh, Councilwoman Magazine, and I took a tour of Eppert's Water Treatment Plant here in Fountain Hills. Our guides were Jeff Stuck and Tim Williams, both very knowledgeable about the functioning of the facility, the underground water piping system, and the future plans for improving service to the community. We were able to not only see the new part of the facility that houses the computer monitoring system that alerts the staff to any problems in the distribution of our water supply, but the outdoor facilities area where the water is cleaned and treated. I believe you all came away with a better understanding of the complexity of the operation and were pleased with the planned future improvements. Anything else? If not, motion to adjourn?
Someone?
And a second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we will reconvene upstairs for our executive session.